School Board of Education regular meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Petrie.
Here.
Mrs. Farola.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You might notice that we have switched up the order of the agenda thanks to a suggestion from Springfield local schools friend Donnie Furlong. He said meetings were kind of boring and people would tune out because it was just business, business, monotone, monotone. You know, I had to agree with him. There's some of that business that has to be done as part of a school board, but we have a lot to celebrate. And I think moving forward, we're going to have a lot more friends in the community if we do our celebrations up front when people are likely to tune in, they can see the great things that are going on, and maybe we can change some minds. So with that, I would like to go to item four, fall sports athletic recognition. Kevin Vaughn, athletic director.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Tonight, we're going to recognize some outstanding achievements that took place over the fall with some of our athletes and coaches, and we're going to get right into it. First, we want to recognize our boys golf MAC championship team. So why don't you guys come on up here and maybe stand right up here and get some candy. All right. I know we're not in any specific order, but as I say your name, maybe just take a step forward so everybody can put a name with a face. Our MAC championship golf team consists of Jordan Bradley, Connor Eckenroth, Brady Hahn, Logan Porter, Jacob Thomas, and Maddox Warford. And Coach Jack Morgan has led these young men to the championship that they've earned. And at the same time, Coach Morgan also received Metro Athletic Conference Coach of the Year. So congratulations. Coach Morgan, say something really quick. This is kind of nice because we had our awards last night, so it's just like a little warm-up last night.
First, I'd like to thank the board for letting us come here tonight. It's very, I think it's very important that we recognize these student athletes because they're probably the best of the best in our building. So I think it's one of those things that the more we can recognize them, the better. We actually had a great year. We finished 12 and 6. And Coach Vaughn and I were looking, and since 1970, all right, this is, there's only three other Springfield High School golf teams that had a better record than these guys. So, which is pretty fantastic. We actually had more all-conference honors on this team than any other team in the league, which is outstanding. And then I just want to point out Brady Hahn, who's a junior, he won the Ohio High School state sectional tournament, you know, the first round of that. So he got to move on. But that's the first time we've ever had a medalist in Springfield High School, which is outstanding. So I thank you guys for coming. I know I'm going to be short and sweet, but I think these guys deserve the best, you know, as much as I can. I know, and I hate to tell you this, but this tells you how great these kids are. A lot of them are volunteering for basketball at the school right there, so they're going to be leaving soon. But thank you.
And just a shout out to our Booster Club. They provided the Metro Conference Championship sweatshirts or hoodies that the boys are all displaying tonight. So obviously Booster Club does a ton for us, and that's just in addition. Moving on, we have, we want to recognize Coach Kevin Hannah. Had an outstanding year, and he's had a good tenure with the girls' golf program. He's not with us tonight, unfortunately. His middle child, Dylan Hannah, is participating in college in basketball, and he's watching him tonight. So Coach Hannah's not going to be with us, but I do have some words that Coach Hannah wanted me to share with all of you. So I'm just going to read, if you don't mind. First, I would like to apologize for my absence. Michelle and I are in Pennsylvania watching Dylan, our son, play basketball for Westminster College. We both know there will be, there will come a time that watching our own children compete in the sport that they love will come to an end. This is what truly ignites my passion for coaching. Passing my limited knowledge about the game onto the next generation gives me more and more time to watch student athletes grow like I watched my own children grow. It is one of the most rewarding responsibilities I have been granted, and I thank you, the Board of Education, Coach Vaughn, and the parents for the continued trust and support. In my eight years as the girls' golf coach, I have witnessed some great things happen to some wonderful young ladies. Great friendships, great achievements, and for many, a raised self, a raised sense of self-confidence. The program's record over the last eight years is 92 wins and 44 losses. This year, we finished with nine wins and 10 losses. However, the program had a few firsts. Kami Lapores earned MAC Player of the Year for the first time in program history. She is also the program's first Division One district tournament qualifier, playing alongside the girls from North Canton, Green, Lake, Jackson, Glen Oak, and Hoboken. We also have Morgan Miller, who secured a spot on the league's first team all-MAC tournament. Together, these two contributed to 43 of those victories in their four-year career. Coach Paula Murphy and I have a young team coming back, and all of them are committed and enjoy playing this challenging sport. The program already has a few junior high students ready to step in. I'm looking forward to witnessing what the future holds for these young ladies as they represent Springfield High School. Thank you, Kevin Hannah. We've talked about Kami Lapores becoming the golfer of the year for MAC Athletic Conference. Kami, I saw you in here. I don't know where you, oh, there you are. Come on up. Come on up, Morgan, as well. Coach Murphy, would you like to come up? You're part of the program. We have Kami Lapores. Go ahead and step forward. Who was the Metro Athletic Conference Player of the Year, the first time that we've had that in school history. So go ahead, congratulations, Kami. As Coach mentioned, just a great four years between two seniors that have been a part of it all. Morgan Miller also on first team. Congratulations, Morgan. Lastly, we want to recognize Peyton Kearney and Coach Jody Burgess, if you want to come on up. Peyton, junior, doing an outstanding job, and he's always been a worker and competitive and successful since he started, and we're continuing to see that growth, and we're excited for the future. But as a junior, he was a state qualifier. Congratulations, Peyton. Give him up, run over the applause. In addition, you know, we have, you know, we talk about some long-term positives for the boys' golf program, but we have a record setter here. Broke the school record for boys cross-country with a time of 16-16, if I'm not mistaken, at the Legends' invite. Just an outstanding achievement. So, and he's probably going to break his own record again next year. So we're looking forward to that. I just put you on the spot. So there's your challenge. And then obviously, you know, competing at the state level, it takes an outstanding coach. So we have Coach Jody Burgess in her first year as the girl, as the boys' and girls' cross-country coach, along with her staff, Erin Skaggs and Tim Burns. So congratulations to both of you, and if you want to say anything, more than welcome. And that's it for our fall sports. And, you know, winter sports is underway. Hope to see everybody out, looking at events. Check out Arbor Live for our schedules. We have girls' basketball kicking off their season this Friday at Buckeye. We also have bowling starting this weekend in the Metro Athletic Conference. I believe everybody's on my weekly schedule that I send out with, or weekly email I send out with the schedule, so hopefully we see you out, and we do a lot of updates on Facebook and Twitter. So, all right, that's it from athletics. Thank you.
Okay, item five, Springfield High School and Junior High Students of the Month recognition. High school student of the month is Karen Jeong, and the junior high student is Katie Dotson.
Hi. I'm Michelle Warner, the principal of Springfield High School and Junior High, and we are going to start with Katie Dotson. Katie, will you come up here, please? The National Honor Society has opened up Student of the Month, and they invite all the teachers to make recommendations or nominations for students. There's one high school and one junior high. They redact the names of all of those nominations so that when the National Honor Society students look at them, they don't know what the student is. They just see what it is that they have done. And Katie was picked as our Student of the Month. It says Katie is an excellent scholar, but beyond that, she is a kind and caring person. She's a prime example of the Spartan standard in human form. She's responsible with her work and her belongings. She's respectful to her teachers and her peers. She is safe in her surroundings and makes sure that others are safe, too. Most of all, she is one of the kindest people I have met. Katie is kind to everyone she meets, and she has the most contagious smile. You were nominated by Dr. Putt. Here's a copy of what's going to be posted in the school as you come in, and here's your certificate. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I will read our Student of the Month for our student who isn't present this evening, and that is Karen Jeong. Karen is one of the hardest-working students that I have ever met. Karen has both the tenacity and the drive to stick with difficult tasks until they're completed. She strives for excellence in everything she does. In addition, Karen is very kind and helpful to her classmates. For example, she offered to take a new student on a tour of our building. She's also helped the student log into her computer. Lastly, Karen made a study guide for one of her classes and shared it with a fellow classmate. Karen is hardworking, kind, and considerate. She proudly represents the Spartan standards, and she was nominated by Lori Tipton. Congratulations.
So we were at a principal's or administrative meeting, and Michelle, Mrs. Warner, shared what she was doing with Student of the Month, and the Schrap and Spring Hill said, whoa, 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 wait a minute, we do the same thing. So, but we have a lot more students that they, that they recognize. So they included them this month, so I'm going to read some names. So for Schrap Intermediate School Star Students for the first quarter, we had Owen Kaiser, Riley Johnson, DeJuro Kubrick, Kendall Knight, Jackson Torde, Alicia Vang, Avery Ketterman, Isaac Shoemaker, Summer Jowers, Serenity Wilson, Pearlie Caldwell, Chris Richardson, Crystal Aguirre, Colin Van Busker, Anna Lisa Phillips, Macy Rogers, Kane Rock, Haley Hall, Chloe Tapscott, Logan Stefan, Riley Maling, and Gabby Hess. Hopefully, they're out there watching, so congratulations for Schrap. For Spring Hill, they're the elementary treasured leaders. And for the first quarter, we have Lucas Metco, Myra Lee, Charlie Malia, Alexa McBride, Jacob Nance, Anna Grant, Kayla Heights, Hunter Ziegler, Kevin Loesch, Joseph Saw, Aurora Payton, Elena Miller, Hunter Garrett, Kensley Bitner, Kylie McDermott, Mason Blosser, Alyssa Allgood, Addie Javens, Riker Jones, Easton Cole, Rosalie Dessin, Melissa Kubrick, and Scott Kizner. So congratulations to Spring Hill Elementary Treasure Leaders.
Okay, in line with switching things around, we've moved board members informal up toward the head of the agenda. Yeah, yeah, any of the kids that are here, I'm sure you have plenty of things you need to do. Thank you for coming. You're the busy type.
Yeah.
That was nice. That was very nice. I guess I'll start with the informal comments that it would be very easy to fall into a trap of worrying about what we did not accomplish instead of celebrating what we did, and I think tonight was a good starting point. So I'm happy to start the celebrations.
I would, I agree with you. There are a lot of good things going on, and we just have to make sure that we do make them public knowledge rather than just keep them, you know, we talk about it among themselves. Did you see this? Did you see that? But to share is good. The only thing I would like to say about that L word is to thank everyone that was willing or had the time to help, help us with this last effort. And I think we, as a board, have some listening and some discussions to be had as we move forward, but do thank people. Thank you.
I was going to mention, I think alumni, I always mentioned alumni in the spotlight, and I had two of them that I was going to bring. And next month, I will share Jenna J. Smith and Brandon Whitecotton, interesting after they have left. So next month, I will have their Alumni Wednesday. So any alumni out there that want to contact the school, there's a form, Alumni Wednesday, we'd like to hear from you. And our alumni of Springfield's High School have spread far and wide in this world and are doing great things in our community here, across the country, and across the state. And I'll read that next month.
I don't have anything to say.
So I'm upset, I won't lie, that the levy failed again. A lot of people worked on it. This is going into year three that we've been basically begging for people to help us. I mean, I have like three pages to read, but it is a good night, but I don't know what else to do. I've heard people say that they voted no because of a swimming pool. That building doesn't even stand in our district anymore. Nobody that, that has no impact on our current educational needs in this district. Heard people on social media voting no because of who was hired to build the new building. I don't know who approved that. I know I didn't. I didn't even live in this community when the school was built, to be honest. I don't know much about construction, but I do know with how I've sat here for 10 months that vids do come in. Should that person have been hired? I don't know, and I'm not going to go back and look. I do know that since we've been here, that we have tried to be local. We do go to our local community members, businesses, and try to get them as involved as we can, promote them just as much as they promote us. So we do try, we do make changes. But those kids, that building was, I believe, going on nine years old now. The senior class was in second, third grade when that decision was made, and people are voting no, and impacting kids that weren't even in school or born when that was made. And I find that just disheartening. There are people that attacked our kids at voting pools because they were standing there trying to get a rally going. Nobody up here asked for any of those kids to be there. We had students go out there. I know somebody in the audience's child that was out there because I went up to him and thanked him. He wanted to be there. They want to be there because they see firsthand of what's being taken from them. So for me, it's, it's personal because I have a kid, I have two kids that are in there. I started getting involved when my son was in fifth grade. He is now a freshman in high school, and I'm still begging for the same things, for people to understand. I've heard that people put down our teachers because they're out there helping with our levy committee, and you sit there and say, they just want to get paid more. I think that is the most absurd thing. They sit there and know that our gifted kids have no programs to help them. Nothing. We have no gifted programs, that they don't have the necessities because people can't just sit there and say they're worth it. So for me, to keep seeing that everybody wants to vote no, I don't see how we can sit there and ignore it. So I think we need our parents to help and really understand how much of an education helps them throughout life. Many of our kids do not go to college. That's great. I didn't go to college right away. I went into the military. That was my path. But without K through 12 education, I couldn't even succeed in there. So I hope that people that are watching this can understand that. It's very personal to every single person up here who wants to go and vote no. And I'm not saying that people don't have a reason to vote no, but a swimming pool, that is, I'm sorry, but that's not a reason to vote no. So I hope you will give us a chance. Help us by telling us what you need to know from us so that you'll vote yes. What can we change? What can we do better? What are we doing terrible at? And let us change it. We need to figure out how we can build the trust back so that our Spartan pride can come back. It is, the morale is right back down to bottom, and we deserve better. Our kids deserve better, our teachers deserve better, and I think that come May, like, I know that people are ready, and it has to start right now. So that's what I have to say. I'm very sporty. I love all the kids that were here tonight. I sat through Kevin's very long sports awards last night, and we loved it. We're glad it was back, but I don't want to see any of those kids move, and they will move. So that's my two cents, so take it with pleasure.
Thank you. Item nine, approval of minutes. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 18th, 2022, exhibit one.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 10, citizens' comments on agenda items. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations. All right, thank you.
What'd he say?
I covered his.
All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, payment of bills monthly. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of October, pending audit, exhibit two.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 12, payment of bills then and now. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution for the payment of bills per ORC Section 5705.41D, exhibit three.
I'll make a motion. So moved.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Item 13, acceptance of financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for October 2022, exhibit four, five, and six.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 14, personnel. It is recommended that the board accept, approve the following personnel items. 14.1, resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Danielle James effective October 21st, 2022. 14.2, resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Don Black from her cafeteria position effective October 21st, 2022. Don will continue to hold her position as a bus driver. 14.3, resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Vera Rogers effective December 31st, 2022. 14.4, retirement resignation. Accept the retirement resignation of principal Lisa Varden effective March 1st, 2023. 14.5, retirement resignation. Accept the retirement resignation of teacher Margaret Gannon effective June 1st, 2022. 14.6, unpaid leave of absence. Approve an unpaid leave of absence for certified employee Ashley Poles to begin once FMLA leave is exhausted through the remainder of the 2022-23 school year. 14.7, unpaid leave of absence. Approve an unpaid leave of absence for classified employee Rachel Frame beginning November 7th, 2022, through the remainder of the 2022-23 school year. 14.8, employment. Employ Teresa Morrison as a standby bus driver per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective October 17th, 2022. Routes assigned as needed with hours varying depending upon assignment. 14.9, employment. Employ Teresa Morrison as a two-hour educational assistant at Springfield High School and Junior High per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective October 31st, 2022. This is in addition to being a standby bus driver. 14.10, employment. Reassign classified employee Karen Morgan as a two-hour educational assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective October 17th, 2022. 14.11, employment. Reassign classified employee Joanna Hanshaw as a two-hour cafeteria worker at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective October 20th, 2022. 14.12, employment. Employ Leah Henkel as a 6.75-hour teaching assistant at Schrap Intermediate per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective November 14th, 2022. Fourteen point thirteen, employment. Reassign classified employee Tammy Trnaski as a two-hour educational assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective October thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. Fourteen point fourteen, employment. Employ the following classified substitutes per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective the first day assigned. Rachel Powell, Rodney Bowen, Elizabeth Hicks. Fourteen point fifteen, district leadership team. Approve the following teachers for the district leadership team, D L T, per the negotiated agreement. Christine DeLaro, Denise Freeze, Michelle Hannah, Michelle King, Dina Screamo, and Melanie Smithers. Fourteen point sixteen, building leadership teams. Approve the following teachers for building leadership teams, B L T, per the negotiated agreement. Spring Hill Elementary, Wendy Bluey, Denise Freeze, Jen Hoskin, Paula Murphy, Dina Screamo, Brett Zimmerman. Shrop Intermediate, Amanda Chumita, Christine DeLaro, Dana Floyd, Cynthia Johnson, Melanie Smithers. Springfield High School and Junior High. Dave Bosco, Julie D. Tomasa, Matt Graves, Michelle Hannah, Kelly Humanansky, Michelle King, Andrea Novicki, Melinda Weakland, and Michelle Jardzargis. Fourteen point seventeen, non-sport supplemental contracts banned booster funded. Approve the following non-sport supplemental contracts for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and are paid once funds are received in full from the banned boosters. Jack Elliott, summer percussion instructor, nine percent. Sandra Peters, color guard instructor, five percent. Joey Morrison, percussion assistant in lieu of majorette instructor, three percent. Fourteen point eighteen, athletic supplemental contract. Approve the following athletic supplemental contract for the two thousand twenty-two school year per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure. Richard Castello, varsity boys bowling head coach, thirteen percent. Fourteen point nineteen, volunteer coaches. Approve the following volunteer coaches for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year pending proper licensure. Jacob Bostic, wrestling coach. Kyle Haddix, wrestling coach. Paul Miller, boys basketball coach. Jason Franklin, junior high boys basketball coach. Michael Keys, bowling coach. Jeremy Weakland, bowling coach.
So there's just a couple I'd like to pull out of that. Fourteen point four, retirement resignation. So Lisa Varden did give us her letter of resignation. Her last day is going to be February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three. She was originally hired in nineteen eighty-nine as a teacher, and then she was hired as a principal in two thousand. But besides her thirty-four years of being here in Springfield, she also graduated from Springfield High School. So she is truly the epitome of what a Springfield Spartan is, and she is going to be duly missed. What we will start to do, as unfortunate as it is, we are going to have to fill her shoes. So we are going to start the process of how we are going to finish the school year and then look for the replacement for next year. And it is going to be a process where we are going to have administrators, teachers, and parents involved in the hiring of the principal at Shrop. The other one I'd like to point out is fourteen point five, the retirement resignation of Peggy Gannon. It should have been of June of twenty-three. Peggy has been with us for twenty-four years, and she teaches English in a mindfulness class, which is very much needed at the high school, and the kids thoroughly enjoy it. She is going to be another one who's going to be very missed, and we really thank her for her service here at Springfield. And just one other, the fourteen point five and fourteen point six. The district in building leadership teams, just for those who don't know what that is. Those are teachers who actually help work, the building leadership teams help work with the principals in making different decisions that's going to better our students. And the district leadership team, which is led by Mary, works as a district on what things we can do to help better our district. And one of our main focuses for our district leadership team for this year is our chronic absenteeism. And the schools are doing, really thinking outside the boxes on how we can get our kids to be here at school, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Lisa, the date, February what was it?
Twenty eighth of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
I'll kick in a couple words for Lisa. I've always enjoyed sitting down and talking with her. A lot of people don't realize her master's degree was in school safety, so I was always interested in sitting down and talking with her. She always brought a different perspective to the table. I will miss her as a building principal. Nice lady. Peggy Gannon also. Didn't know her as much as I stopped in and would chit chat with Lisa, but there's a lot of experience walking out the door right there.
It's my pleasure hiring Peggy Gannon when I was there, and she's an extraordinary teacher.
Deeply passionate about her teaching.
So, well, they all, I mean, they're some good people. It's just, you know, when I've hired them, then I feel a little, you know, ownership.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Okay, item, motion passed. Item fifteen, policy approval. Board members have received copies. This is our second reading, and there will be a vote tonight.
Correct.
Okay. Policies, one six one seven, three two one seven, four two one seven, and seven two one seven, weapons revised. Two 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 zero, adoption of courses of study, revised. Two two eight zero, preschool program revised. Two four one three, career advising, revised. Two four three zero, district-sponsored clubs and activities, revised. Two four three one, interscholastic athletics, revised. Three one two zero point zero eight, employment of personnel for co-curricular, extracurricular activities, revised. Five one one one, eligibility of resident, non-resident students, revised. Five three three five, care of students with chronic health conditions, revised. Five three three six, care of students with diabetes, revised. Five four six zero point zero one, diploma deferral, revised. Six five five zero, travel payment and reimbursement, relocation costs, revised. Six seven zero zero, Fair Labor Standards Act, F L S A, revised. Seven four four zero, facility security, revised. Seven four four zero point zero three, small unmanned aircraft systems, revised. Eight two one zero, school calendar, revised. Eight three two zero, personnel files, revised. Eight three three zero, student records, revised. Eight six zero zero, transportation, revised.
So moved.
I'll second.
And like Mr. Petrie said, this is our second reading. You notice they mostly say revised for those that did not tune in last month. We go through a company called Neola, and what they do is that they, with the new laws that are created, O R Cs, they redo our policies for us, so we are up to date legally as much as we can be. So every once in a while, we go through this, maybe once a year, where they revise our policies.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item sixteen, donations. Sixteen point one, Walmart, donation of school supplies valued at approximately seven thousand dollars to Springfield local schools. Sixteen point two, Paragon Tech Incorporated, donation of eight hundred fifteen dollars and eighteen cents from Paragon Tech for the Innovative Student Sub Award grant to Andrea Novicki's class. Sixteen point three, Port Summit Rotary, donation of eight hundred dollars from Port Summit Rotary to the S H S National Honor Society.
So moved.
So just a couple, Walmart, like, they did donate the seven thousand dollars, and Mary sat and so divided up the supplies and separated them and gave them to the different schools, so we do thank Walmart for that. Paragon Tech, Andrea Novicki's class, if you had a chance to read her article in the paper, you see all the innovative things that she's doing in her classroom, and one of the ways that she helps fund it is by writing different grants. And it seems like she's getting grant approval over and over again, so this was just another one that she got, which will help her students. And Port Summit Rotary, they've really started to take an interest in Springfield schools, and we're doing a lot with the Rotary Club. And they knew that our National Honor Society was a little short of money, so they donated eight hundred dollars to help them with it. And just to say, you know, how great our kids are, our kids then went out to help paint concession stand at the Lower Waterworks Park in Lake More. And we're going to be doing a lot more involved with the Rotary, having them come involved with the school, not just with the National Honor Society, but with all our students.
Can I add one?
Sure.
Last night at the Fall Sports Banquet, so throughout the season, coaches nominate student athletes of the week. Michelle Hannah does a lot with it, kind of attracts all of us coaches down, says, "Don't forget, we need your nominations." Couple of years ago, the kids used to get T-shirts, and sadly, COVID kind of took that away. And towards the end of the season, Michelle and I decided that it's time for those kids to also be recognized. And we reached out to a couple of local companies, and Fernando Leon, I'm sure none of you have ever heard of him, from Uncle Tito stepped up, and himself and Lori Greer from T's and Things made twenty-five T-shirts for our junior high and our high school Fall Athletes of the Week. They'll also do that for our winter athletes and our spring athletes. So that was, they all got them last night, and they looked really good, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item seventeen, treasurer's report. Twice a year, per the law, we have to, the treasurer has to put out a five-year forecast, and I was hoping I was going to be able to share with you the one, the other one. I wrote some notes down here, and Ms. Terry hit upon a couple of mine, so I don't have to discuss it. But I do share her sorrow and everybody else's sorrow that works so hard for this levy. It gets discouraging, I know. The five-year forecast. There's a couple lines I want the board to focus on. Line thirteen point oh two. You'll notice that the levy proceeds bounce from fiscal twenty-three to fiscal twenty-four. And that's what happens when you don't pass the levy. You lose a year's worth of revenue. The next line is six point zero one. You'll notice that next year in fiscal twenty-four, we'll be spending more than we're getting, which causes your cash reserves to go down, which causes attention from the state auditor's office, and we all know how that is. It's a lot more work for everybody involved. Seven point oh two, cash bounce, money in the bank, as I call it. You could see the difference between that and fifteen point oh one. Fifteen point oh one has the impact of a levy. That number was actually substantially higher last forecast because you had the levy proceeds in fiscal twenty-three. That's not on here anymore. You'll see the dramatic impact that our levy would have made. We will continue to watch what we spend. We will continue to make sure we balance every month to the penny, which we do every month. And on a twenty-five million dollar budget, sometimes that can be difficult. But we do need everyone's help at the next levy cycle. At the current rate, I show in fiscal twenty-five, a five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar bounce. That's a number that sounds like a lot, but that could go away. It doesn't take much. But the good news is, and there is good news, we're reaping the benefits of the new health care. The new health care is helping us. We've come out with a, thanks to Melissa Kitchin's hard work, a health screening. We're hoping to get fifty percent of our employees. It's very important. It gives you a kind of, especially for the younger people, a if there is anything wrong, sugar is one that has impacted myself. And so I'm very passionate for all the young teachers and support staff to find out what your levels are. It can help you in the future. But the screening is, you know, it gives you everything. It gives you all your cholesterol, your sugar counts, your blood pressure, your B M I. And I had the pleasure of helping out, and we had quite a few people, we had quite a few walk-ins, and they were very appreciative of it. And the good news is, if we get fifty percent, we get a rebate. And I think our staff has realized that we have a set of funds that's provided by the company, so we're going to give some incentives so people can understand their health. We don't think about it often. When you're young, it doesn't impact you, but when you get old, older, like age sixty and above, you know, I'm just telling you, it can impact you. But again, we have some time. Thank goodness for Esser Money. Esser Money saved us. It delayed the inevitable. What I don't want to see, though, is the state coming in and taking over again. That would be the third time in our district. People, I hear, I've had people call me and say, "What's the problem with that?" The problem with that is it gives the district a black eye. It really does. And it causes the young parents to question, as Ms. Terry would say, and I agree with her, when they want to choose a district for their children, we don't want to have that label on us, and we can, we can help that. It's not easy. I mean, it's not hard. We, so. If the board has any questions on this forecast, I'd be glad to answer them. Thanks, and thanks all you guys for coming. It's nice to see people in the audience.
Chris, if we pass the levy in May, when will we see an impact on our budget, on the forecast?
In fiscal twenty-four, you will notice down at line thirteen point zero one, you'll see half of the proceeds from the levy, and then fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, you'll see the full proceeds. And what that'll do is it will enable us, the leadership team, to come up with ideas on programs that we need. And I think we all can agree, especially in the secondary level, the kids need high-level courses. Item nineteen, central office report. Oh, yes. I forgot that it combined. Five-year forecast, yeah, we'll need.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item nineteen central office report.
So yesterday, we had the unfortunate occurrence of losing heat at Spring Hill Elementary due to pipe break and some of the aging pipe systems there. So I'd like to take a minute today to thank all the parents and staff for their cooperation during that inconvenience yesterday, but also to thank our maintenance team of Ron Kirby and Andy Morgan led by Supervisor Mike Smith for getting in there and fixing those problems yesterday throughout the day so that we were able to get back to school today. And then I'd also like to bring to everybody's attention that we do have several job openings available for support staff in the district. Postings went out yesterday for three teaching assistants, one in our preschool units, one at Shrop Intermediate School, and one at the high school and junior high. In addition to those, we also have postings for a standby bus driver and two standby bus monitor positions to help support our transportation staff there. So if you or somebody you know is looking for a job, please visit springfieldspartons.org/jobs for more information about those.
Thanks. I had the opportunity today to go into the classrooms and actually see some of the teachers implementing our science of reading-driven adjustments that we're making to our reading curriculum at the lower levels, which means that we are implementing multi-sensory explicit systematic ways of teaching reading to our students at our lowest levels. It was fabulous to see the teachers and the way that they were, they were teaching the students and to see the students' responses to what was going on. It was just a nice, really great see. And in this particular case, I really saw our youngest children responding very well to the programs that we have in place. In this particular case, we were looking at foundations, which is our phonics program. In addition, just to go over a little bit more about the Walmart donation, it was approximately $7,000 worth of supplies. I have to say approximately because that is just a guesstimation based off of what they gave us. It was like Christmas time. It was two pallets full of materials, including pencils, mechanical pencils, brand-name pens, brand-name crayons, glue, folders, things that our students could use. So those were divided up based off of what the, each individual building would use. And then those are there for the students in case they are in need of those specific materials because we don't want a student saying, "I can't do my work because I don't have a pencil," or "I don't have a pen." So we're very fortunate to have Walmart as a partner and being so generous to us and giving us those donations. So once again, thank you to Walmart for providing that for us.
Well, from my little preschool world this month, our preschool teachers are excited to start bringing back some of the family engagement activities that they used to do. So the first one that is coming back is going to occur next Wednesday. They're having a little preschool Friendsgiving. And the preschoolers are going to each bring in their favorite food to share with their classmates. And that does have an educational point when you're looking at students in the preschool level who sometimes have some needs of trying different foods. So sometimes they might have certain food aversions or things like that. So they'll have the opportunity to maybe experience new food or something they haven't tried because one of their best friends brought it in. So we're super excited. Each preschooler gets to bring a guest with them to experience the little feast that they're going to have. So it will be super exciting and I know the kids will be very excited to share their favorite food with their classmates.
So as everyone said, you know, it was a tough two weeks after the election. Believe it or not, we saw people calling us, asking us if it passed. It did not. We failed 53% to 47%. And in May, it was 52% to 48%. So we were just right around, with more people coming out to vote, it was, you know, right around the same loss. So as everybody had said, we're going to start to, you know, we've already started to do some self-reflection, you know, analyzing, doing different brainstorms, what's going to be our next steps. And we are going to start having conversations and so be on the lookout for that. I do want to thank again Uncle Tito's, one of our greatest partners. They allowed us to hold our watch party there that night. So, you know, thank you to the staff and to Fernando for doing that. And second, I do want to thank, we have gotten a lot of, all of us, I think, some different emails and phone calls of people, you know, still giving their support or their condolences and, you know, reaching out saying, you know, "Keep your head up, you know, we'll get it next time." So I do appreciate all the nice words that we were getting from different, from different people. Last night, Kevin, you did an outstanding job with the sports banquet. It was so refreshing and exciting to see a group of students that, as Miranda said, was just the epitome of what makes Springfield. And the kids were so polite and so appreciative, I think, of everything that was said to them, that was said about them and given to them and what they've earned. And to all our coaches, the time that they've put in, you know, when they were talking about their students, it was heartfelt and it was, and it was true. And it just brought a smile to my face last night. And yes, it might've been a little bit long, but it was really, really, really well worth it. And Kevin, I know you said we haven't had it since, what, 2000?
Yes, 2019.
2019? So it was, it was very COVID time yesterday, darn COVID time. It was very rewarding. So very nice job putting that together. Before I get to one other thing, just so you know, our policies are listed on our website. So if you do want to go in and see what they are, you just go to our board section and go to policies. If you need help with that, just give us a call and we'll get you in the right direction where to find them. And then also, the five-year forecast will also be up on the website so everybody can see that. So I'm not there yet. Okay. So let's go there now. So one of my first times that I was at the Springfield Township Women's Club meeting, that was a couple months ago, you know, I had a chance to meet a whole bunch of wonderful women. And, you know, they were just sitting there talking about Springfield and the pride that they have with it. I was really surprised at how many past teachers were there and how many women were there that have lived in Springfield most of their lives. So speaking with Mrs. Beasley, she came up to me and she was like, "Hey, we really have Springfield pride, but you know, we have no flags hanging at the high school that have the Springfield Spartans." So I came back and I spoke with the team and I said, "Listen what I just found out at the women's club. This is something that they think would be, you know, well worthwhile at the high school." And they responded, "Why would we just stop at the high school? We have flag poles at all the different buildings and at the administrative buildings." And then Mary says, "You know what? I've got some grant money that will fit perfectly for buying the flags." So through grant money that Mary had found for us through the Federals, these are the flags that are going to be now hanging at every school building and the administrative building to represent the Springfield Spartans' pride. So we're very proud, very proud of them. So, thank you. Hand up. That's it.
Okay. Item twenty-one, items worthy of your note. November 24th and 25th Thanksgiving break, no school. November 28th Conference Day, Conference Comp Day, no school. December 19th, winter vacation begins. December 20th, next regular Board of Education meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Springfield Preschool Center right here. And January 2nd, classes resume.
And just a special note on that too, we are going to start working on the calendar for next year. And I think what we're going to try to do is do a two-year plan because I know that gives our parents a better, to plan out their, their trips and their vacations and different things. So that will be coming up in the next months.
Okay. Item twenty-two citizens comments. Participants shall be limited to five-minute durations.
Can I speak? Or does Dan?
If you would go to the microphone, that would be great.
I'm Wanda, trying to help you.
I just want to read this. It's under five minutes, I promise. And I'm not here to attack you, so please don't take it. Okay. Anyway, obviously, you know, I'm here to talk about the levy.
Before you start, Glenn, I'm sorry. Could you give us your address?
My address?
Yeah, that's part of the citizens' comments.
Okay. I'm just down the road, 2297 Maslin Road.
Okay. Thank you.
So obviously, the levy failed and I've been encouraged to hear what all you've had to say. It's very, you know, kind of refreshes me to be honest. So I'm just going to read this. The comments I hear from people, as you know, as I've said to you, that are not satisfied with the way the school is spending money and they seem to have no confidence in the board, et cetera. One of you posted that you have seen the police fire, libraries, zoo, and parks issue on ballots all during and since COVID and that you barely saw and heard people question, "How are you using the money?" And that is a very fair point, very, very fair point. I don't have an answer. What I do know is that the only way to stop people questioning, "How are you using the money?" is by showing them. Why can't that information be readily available to the public so people like me who vote yes on the levy can say, "Hey, here's the information." Or, "Here's where you can find that information." Maybe I'm not understanding how all this works. I'm not privy to ins and outs of all the school administration and the boards. I ran a preschool for 15 years, but it doesn't really count, I guess. But anyway, to be honest, we raised four children in Copley Schools. I never doubted the school board. We always voted yes and we trusted them to do what was best for our children. We never had issues. I mean, you're always going to have people that will vote no, just to vote no, but our school levies passed. Our grandchildren went to Revere schools until two years ago when they moved here to be closer to our son-in-law's mother who is ill. We followed last year. Revere's school levy's always passed. We can't really compare these schools. It's a different demographic. The folks here need security and where their taxes are going as every penny counts. So why can't the information be provided to them to stop, as I call, their moaning? Look, no matter how you spend the money, there's going to be people that won't approve other ways it's being spent. That's just a fact. Trust me. There are people voicing their opinion about what Copley was going to do with their money if the levy passed out there. I'm sure you all know there was a levy out there. And someone said to me, "Well, why fix the bleachers at the stadium instead of spending money on bus drivers or such and such?" And I explained that for one, bleachers are dangerous. But besides that, the levy was an unruled levy, not an operational levy, and building money can't be used for operational purposes. "Oh," she said. The point being, you may think everyone understands how this all works, but the majority do not. It needs to be spelt out. Our retired pastor was a lawyer and very, very intelligent. And when he would give his, his sermons, he used words that aren't, really weren't, you would have to go home and look them up, which kind of defeated the purpose really. And I said to him, "What you really need to preach to everyone in a fourth grade level, I don't care how intelligent you are. It just helps for it to be black and white, if that makes sense." Something else I noticed was that the school levy is not well advertised. Back in May, I live right down the road, and my granddaughter came home one day and said, "Well, the school levy didn't pass." She's in fifth grade, by the way. My grandson is in 10th grade. And I said, "I didn't even know there was a levy." Or I would've been right there. I've never voted no on any levy, ever. I don't know what levy was on, to be honest, this time for Springfield. If it was operational or it was, I didn't know. I just wouldn't have voted yes because that's what I do. But anyway, I go back to the question, how do we educate this community on the workings of school money and make the spending transparent for all to see? Finally, what can I do to help? This community seems disconnected on many levels and I would love to help any way I can. And I hope that I can do that and that, because I'm passionate about my grandchildren being here, obviously. It's, you get that way with your grandchildren a little bit more than your children. But anyway, so I would like to help. And if I'm totally transparent, we tried to sell our house because I've just not been happy here in this community because it just seems so, I don't know how else to sell it. Our house didn't sell for many reasons and privately, I'm happy to tell you, but the school is one of them. And it was disheartening. The other one's because the water keeps leaking into our garage from the road. But that's another meeting. Anyway, that's all I have to say and I hope I can help in what we can do. And I hope I've offered some insight, but I think you just need to, I don't know how to get this information out, but I don't want people to say, "Well, this and this." Here's the proof, you know? You kind of just got to show black and white. Here it is. This is what we're doing. This is what we've spent it on. This is what it's going to be spent on. And the, and the building being built, somebody's upset still because of who built it? Come on, we got to move on. I mean, maybe I'm just old. I don't know, but come on, get over it. That's all I have to say. Thank you. And thank you for tonight. It was, I was very encouraged.
Thank you for the offer to help too.
Oh, we're going to reach out.
My husband will tell you. He's from England, so he's up.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Item twenty-three adjourned. It is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
So moved.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are adjourned.